And citizens are actually voting on two things?[143.37:143.37][S11] There's actually, yes, the school budget itself, whether they feel the budget is[150.91:150.91][S11] too high, too low, or just right, and whether to continue the process of the validation[156.54:156.54][S11] vote for the next three years. That would be a yes or no question.[159.84:159.84][S01] And what does it cost us to conduct this validation vote?[164.15:164.15][S11] It depends on if it is combined with any other elections. If we use the machines,[170.34:170.34][S11] which we're actually not tomorrow, we are hand tallying, it could run upwards of $5,000[175.45:175.45][S11] or $6,000, depending if we use the machines, so.[178.84:178.84][S01] Interesting. Okay, Michael.[181.12:181.12][S01] Yeah, thanks, Deborah and Jim. I just wanted to mention the Memorial Day Parade[186.23:186.23][S01] is coming up on Monday, the 27th. It'll be the usual from that end of town to the Veterans'[193.73:193.73][S01] Monument over in Scottsdale Road. The parade begins at 9:00, and there'll be an open house[197.43:197.43][S01] at the Fire Department thereafter. Family Fun Day is coming up again. I did want to[201.76:201.76][S01] congratulate Andy Stein, who's retiring on May 21. Andy's a police sergeant who's been[206.81:206.81][S01] with us for 25 years and was the animal, used to have Buster the dog at one point. Some[213.62:213.62][S01] people have been here for a lot of years, remember when we had a police dog, but he's[217.87:217.87][S01] been, you know, just a great asset to the department for, you know, all 25 years. And[224.62:224.62][S01] he's sorely missed and look forward going out to lunch with him on his last day, along[229.65:229.65][S01] with the chief and a couple of others. He didn't want much fuss upon his retirement,[234.68:234.68][S01] but we are going to go out to lunch and looking forward to seeing him and wishing him all[239.79:239.79][S01] the best as he retires. I will mention again next month that Joan Carrier is also retiring[246.87:246.87][S01] from the library after 18 years. She'll be retiring in the end of June. The council[253.54:253.54][S01] had agreed for us to move forward with the Charles Road Sewer Project. Pleased to report[258.81:258.81][S01] that it came in about $87,000 under budget, which is always good, at least the bid did.[265.12:265.12][S01] So that work began this morning, and appreciate everyone's cooperation on Charles Road as[270.64:270.64][S01] that progresses. The beach parking lot, given down at the park lately, is progressing. It's[276.83:276.83][S01] due to be paved on Wednesday, if the weather cooperates and if every other issue cooperates.[283.94:283.94][S01] So we're hoping to see that done. And just a reminder that that's all done with revenues[289.25:289.25][S01] generated within the park, all of that work. You might have noticed some clearing of brush[295.00:295.00][S01] by the Fort Williams Chapel Road entrance. Pleased that Mike Duddy, our tree warden,[300.27:300.27][S01] was able to get a grant through Project Canopy to plant those new trees, and I think it'll[304.52:304.52][S01] be a much, you know, better entrance as you progress along Shore Road to the way the park[310.16:310.16][S01] looks, rather than looking as you come that way, has looked all overgrown and ugly, and[316.16:316.16][S01] it's, we're slowly trying to improve that whole corridor.[318.94:318.94][S01] David has a question.[319.94:319.94][S12] Since I walk by there almost every day now, I notice that there are more cars parking[323.94:323.94][S12] in that area because there's more area cleared, and I'm wondering if that is the intent. It[329.34:329.34][S12] looks like there's sort of a three or four car parking lot there, which I'm not objecting[333.87:333.87][S12] to, but I just wonder if that's the plan.[335.31:335.31][S01] Not at all, because it's very dangerous to get out of there because of the, as you[339.50:339.50][S01] come out of there, there's a very high stone precipice wall just beyond there, and you[347.37:347.37][S01] can't see anything coming from the north, from the south, so maybe it's something we[352.18:352.18][S01] ought to address.[353.18:353.18][S12] Okay, yeah, because it definitely, I'm seeing more cars parking there.[356.62:356.62][S01] Yeah.[357.62:357.62][S12] Pretty regularly.[358.62:358.62][S01] We can, we can post it because there's an ordinance that says that we can post any[364.06:364.06][S01] place that is unsafe. We don't need specifics, so I'll mention that to Public Works, and[369.68:369.68][S01] we'll get some signs up there. Town Center Committee's having its first meeting, the[377.03:377.03][S01] Conservation Commission on May 20th. The Conservation Commission is having public[381.16:381.16][S01] forums on May 30th and June 6th on the update of the Green Belt Plan. I know the council's[385.88:385.88][S01] received quite a few emails about that particular topic. Building permit notifications, one[393.81:393.81][S01] of your goals, the Planning Board's going to have a public hearing, we believe, on July[397.09:397.09][S01] 16th on that. You're going to start hearing rumors about a development at the top of Broadcove[403.62:403.62][S01] Road, right as you enter Broadcove Road on the right, just after you get past the St.[408.81:408.81][S01] Bart's parking lot, Sangamon Associates, which is involved with Eric Chenquet, has, his representatives[419.97:419.97][S01] have met with Maureen, I believe with the board at this point, to look at a 12-unit condominium[425.34:425.34][S01] project in that particular parcel. So that will likely be, an application will likely[431.34:431.34][S01] come in the next month or two for that, and I'm sure there'll be some public interest[435.68:435.68][S01] in that. The canoe storage racks are very popular at Great Pond. Eighty-one people[443.56:443.56][S01] applied for the 32 spots. Short-term rentals, something else the council has worked on.[451.97:451.97][S01] It's interesting, there's only seven that have come in that have been completed, seven[455.88:455.88][S01] or more in process. We believe that there's more out there, so it's going to be probably[462.49:462.49][S01] a challenge over the next few months to make sure everyone comes into compliance. We[467.81:467.81][S01] had a successful waste collection day Saturday, over 300 cars. The police collected, separately[473.75:473.75][S01] collected prescription drugs. They had over 300 pounds of drugs left off at the police[480.00:480.00][S01] station, about 135 walked in. You note here, it's very good. It looks like we may be recruiting[486.81:486.81][S01] more young people to serve in our fire department. Ten Cape Elizabeth High School students have[491.56:491.56][S01] agreed to participate in a two-week training program beginning June 17. We also will be,[497.81:497.81][S01] have six South Portland students who have signed up. We were doing it jointly with[502.41:502.41][S01] the two departments. So we're providing the space, South Portland's providing most of[506.78:506.78][S01] the training, so that's good. Cape Memory Care, just wanted to make you aware, it's[511.28:511.28][S01] been busy. For the rescue, they've been there 26 times since April 1st. So people wondered[519.08:519.08][S01] the impact that new facility might have on our rescue, and 26 calls since April 1st[524.11:524.11][S01] is considerable. And a lot of it is, you know, people come in, they fall, just the staff[531.11:531.11][S01] is not allowed to lift them, you know, to protect their workers' comp and other issues,[536.86:536.86][S01] and so they call the rescue, and it's been quite busy. The library's been busy hosting[543.72:543.72][S01] programs. They have 80 programs scheduled for the month of May. Code Enforcement Officer[548.07:548.07][S01] is very busy with inspections, 26 just last week alone, and I think that shows the market[553.79:553.79][S01] picking up in terms of people, some, you know, there's construction over at Eastman Meadows,[559.29:559.29][S01] and the market's also picking up with renovations, and, you know, people doing different things[563.25:563.25][S01] to their homes, so. We're still dealing with the Coast Guard on the lens up front. Interesting.[571.91:571.91][S01] The Cape Preservation Society wants to celebrate Cape Elizabeth's 250th anniversary coming[577.16:577.16][S01] up in 2015, and I think there'll be a proposal on your agenda next month to establish a[582.04:582.04][S01] committee that will come up with ideas and solicit public, solicit ideas and figure[587.98:587.98][S01] out what to do for the 250th celebration of Cape Elizabeth from 1765. Other than that,[596.04:596.04][S01] taxes are coming in. And just finally, I wanted to congratulate Darren Brown and Josh[600.66:600.66][S01] Dennison. As you might have seen in the news, they placed first in the Cumberland County[606.14:606.14][S01] Snowplow Rodeo, and I didn't, attended this year. It was over, over by the airport, I[611.29:611.29][S01] believe, and up by the end of the runway there, by the turnpike offices. But what this is,[617.91:617.91][S01] is they drive trucks around. They have, they put up these mailboxes, and they put up cones,[623.16:623.16][S01] and you have to move with certain areas without knocking over the cones or knocking over[626.88:626.88][S01] the mailboxes. So, you know, for, there are about 20 teams, so for us to come in first,[631.88:631.88][S01] Public Works was particularly proud of that, and they're competing. I think it's June[635.66:635.66][S01] 6th up in Skowhegan in the state competition, so we'll see how we do there. But there's[640.73:640.73][S01] a lot going on. Grass is growing, and it's a busy time, so. Thank you.[648.04:648.04][S01] Thank you. Michael, any questions for Michael on his report?[651.62:651.62][S10] Yes.[652.62:652.62][S01] Yes.[653.62:653.62][S10] Mike, could you remind us what the implications are for folks regarding short-term rental?[660.62:660.62][S10] For folks who fail to register with us, and we discover that they are indeed?[664.79:664.79][S01] There's huge, I don't remember the specifics, but there's huge fines in the, in the ordinance[670.61:670.61][S01] of, you know, so much per day for not doing it. And, you know, it's, you know, a lot, most[677.16:677.16][S01] folks should be aware of it. They got a lot of emails from folks who were asking them[680.85:680.85][S01] to take certain positions on it.[682.23:682.23][S10] Right, right.[683.23:683.23][S01] So I think, you know, ignorance of the law is going to be a lame excuse. But anyway,[689.98:689.98][S01] we'll see how it, you know, evolves, and, you know, some of them, yeah, are wary is[693.13:693.13][S01] that, you know, they're going to be renting in August, everyone's going to come in on[696.04:696.04][S01] August 1st, trying to get a permit for the next two weeks, and then they'll discover[700.00:700.00][S01] that there was some requirement that they didn't meet, you know, particularly some[703.20:703.20][S01] of the life safety pieces, and then they'll be all upset because they've rented it out.[707.44:707.44][S01] How can the town stop me? And it's, yeah, could be a challenging few weeks.[713.12:713.12][S01] Any other questions?[716.41:716.41][S01] Just, did you like the written report in advance? Is that okay?[720.12:720.12][S12] Yeah, I liked the written report, and I was frankly amazed at how much stuff was[724.83:724.83][S12] going on in Cape Elizabeth that the town government was involved in. So I want to[729.64:729.64][S12] thank you and your staff for doing all of that and doing such a great job.[733.31:733.31][S01] Well, I think the council should take a little bit of credit for that, too, because[739.20:739.20][S01] part of the conversation Michael and I had during his year review was about trying to[746.48:746.48][S01] sort of fill this out, this manager report, in a way that gives us a little more detail[751.48:751.48][S01] on the things that are happening, because there's a lot of dynamic opportunities here[754.76:754.76][S01] in town that we don't hear about, or we hear about it after the fact. But what you have[759.04:759.04][S01] there is a pretty robust schedule and some really meaningful things that, like the couple[767.06:767.06][S01] of retirements that are coming up shortly.[769.62:769.62][S01] And on that same point, Jim, one of the council goals is to work, the council goal[774.88:774.88][S01] is to work with the town manager to make citizens better aware of the services provided[778.58:778.58][S01] by each municipal department. And we had a long discussion, the department head meeting[782.83:782.83][S01] today, about different ways that we can do this, opportunities, and also, you know,[788.41:788.41][S01] we struggled a bit on the, why are we doing it? You know, is it just to, you know, the[792.41:792.41][S01] point is that they're paying for these services, they ought to know about them, and evaluate,[798.12:798.12][S01] you know, the value. It's not to do a sales job, it's to, it's to make sure everyone's[806.29:806.29][S01] aware of what they're paying for and what's available to them.[809.94:809.94][S01] Thank you. Okay, the next order of business is to review of the minutes. Their first[817.81:817.81][S01] set of minutes are April 8th, 2013. Do I hear a motion?[821.62:821.62][S09] I move we approve the April 8th, 2013 minutes.[827.81:827.81][S01] Do I get a second? Second. David, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?[836.23:836.23][S01] It's unanimous. Second set of minutes would be April 11th, 2013. I have a motion.[843.44:843.44][S10] Move to approve.[847.62:847.62][S01] Seconded. Jessica, any discussion on the 11th? Seeing no discussion, all those[855.12:855.12][S01] in favor? It's approved unanimously. And the third set of minutes would be April 29th,[860.94:860.94][S01] 2013. Do I have a motion? Go to this side of the table. Jamie?[866.56:866.56][S13] Move to approve.[867.56:867.56][S01] And do I have a second?[868.81:868.81][S14] Second.[869.81:869.81][S01] Second. Thank you, Frank. Have any discussion on the 29th? No. All those in favor? Unanimous.[877.50:877.50][S01] Thank you very much. We move to the first item on today's agenda, that's item 79, and[881.94:881.94][S01] that is the Inn by the Sea Annual License Renewal. Do I have a motion?[887.00:887.00][S01] David?[888.56:888.56][S12] I move that we approve the annual renewal of the malt, venus, and spirituous licenses[895.31:895.31][S12] and the special amusement permit for the Inn by the Sea LLC at 40 Bowery Beach Road.[900.00:900.00][S01] Do I have a second?[901.12:901.12][S09] Second.[902.12:902.12][S01] Second, Kathy, thank you. Any discussion?[904.81:904.81][S12] We usually ask, I believe, the town manager if there've been any police complaints or[912.54:912.54][S12] that sort of thing relating to the liquor license.[914.73:914.73][S01] Okay.[915.73:915.73][S01] Okay, now, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank[924.50:924.50][S01] you. And we move to the next item on the agenda, number 80. That's the approval of[929.70:929.70][S01] the Local Buzz Annual License Renewal. Jamie?[933.94:933.94][S13] I'll be recusing myself from the discussion or voting on this, but Dawn is here to speak[939.73:939.73][S13] with you if you need.[941.12:941.12][S01] Okay. So we usually take that as a motion. Jessica, would you like to make a motion?[946.62:946.62][S09] Yes, I move that we accept Counselor Wagner's recusal from the vote, from voting[951.44:951.44][S09] on item 80-213, Local Buzz Annual License Renewals.[956.23:956.23][S01] And do I have a second? Second, Frank. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?[964.56:964.56][S01] It's unanimous. Jamie, we'd ask you if you would step down from the dais, down to the[968.62:968.62][S01] floor. Thank you. It's a nice way to say you have to leave.[972.44:972.44][S09] [laughing][974.12:974.12][S01] Okay. All right. Motion that is item number 80, we have the, do we have a motion[984.16:984.16][S01] on this at this point? No. We just took his motion. So I need a motion for approval of[989.48:989.48][S01] the Local Buzz Annual License Renewal. Jessica?[993.44:993.44][S09] I move that we approve the Local Buzz Annual License Renewal, the annual renewal[999.73:999.73][S09] of malt, venus, and spirituous licenses, and the special amusement permit for the Cape[1004.12:1004.12][S09] Cafe LLC, the Local Buzz at 327 Ocean House Road.[1008.31:1008.31][S01] Do I have a second? Frank, thank you. Do you have any discussion?[1012.62:1012.62][S01] Any complaints?[1015.81:1015.81][S01] No, we did discuss both of these at the department head meeting, with all the department[1019.66:1019.66][S01] heads, and there were no concerns on this or the previous one.[1022.06:1022.06][S01] Okay. Did we want to ask the manager if she wanted to make a comment or two or[1029.73:1029.73][S01] not? Doesn't, we appreciate, we appreciated your coming this evening.[1033.81:1033.81][S15] Thanks.[1034.81:1034.81][S01] And you have to open up at 7:00 in the morning, whatever, so it's, you know.[1037.12:1037.12][S15] 6:30.[1038.12:1038.12][S01] 6:30, there you go. So, okay. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor? And[1044.73:1044.73][S01] it is unanimous. Moving on to item 81. You can now join us again, Jamie.[1050.06:1050.06][S01] Thank you. Thanks for coming. Do I have a motion for the Appointments Committee Recommendation?[1059.16:1059.16][S01] Jessica?[1060.16:1060.16][S09] Yes. Before I'd like, well, let me, I'll go ahead. I move that we approve item 81,[1068.66:1068.66][S09] Appointments Committee Recommendation of the, an unexpired term on the Conservation[1074.70:1074.70][S09] Commission to expire December 31st, 2013, and we have voted to nominate Jim Tassie[1082.16:1082.16][S09] of 30 Cliff Avenue.[1083.44:1083.44][S01] Do I have a second?[1084.44:1084.44][S13] Second.[1085.44:1085.44][S01] Yes. Okay. Second, Frank. Do I have any discussion?[1090.81:1090.81][S09] Yes. As always, it's a tough decision because we continue to have outstanding applicants,[1097.04:1097.04][S09] and we hope that all those who were not chosen keep the website in mind, because there'll[1102.16:1102.16][S09] likely be upcoming vacancies here and there. We'd love to see them again.[1105.83:1105.83][S01] Any other comments from other members of the Appointments Committee? Jamie?[1110.83:1110.83][S01] Yes.[1111.83:1111.83][S13] Yeah, I'd just second what Jessica had to say. We were extremely impressed by all[1115.33:1115.33][S13] the applicants and really appreciate their interest.[1118.12:1118.12][S01] That's great. Anything else, Frank?[1120.33:1120.33][S10] Same thing, and it's stunning, really, the qualifications people have for these[1125.41:1125.41][S10] appointments, and says a lot about the town and people's interest in supporting the town.[1130.83:1130.83][S01] Good. Anything else? You might as well agree.[1134.23:1134.23][S15] I was going to say, there's not very much more I can say.[1136.83:1136.83][S12] She wasn't impressed.[1137.83:1137.83][S15] No, I wasn't impressed at all.[1139.16:1139.16][S01] So we'll let the record reflect that Caitlin Jordan was, was unimpressed with[1146.04:1146.04][S01] the comments you all just made. She wants to make her own comments. Good. Well, thank[1151.00:1151.00][S01] you. Yeah, again, it is, it is incredible in a community like this that we do get the[1156.33:1156.33][S01] kind of time and talent out of folks to make it a better place to live. Any further comments?[1162.73:1162.73][S01] Discussion? No. Call for vote. All those in favor of the appointment? It is unanimous.[1168.41:1168.41][S01] Thank you very much. Item number 82, the Voter Registration Appeals Board. Well, I[1174.41:1174.41][S01] have a recommend, I have, well, I guess we'll ask Deb for, do you want to give a little[1182.33:1182.33][S01] background?[1183.33:1183.33][S15] Sure. State law requires a Registration Appeals Board that is in place in each community[1188.88:1188.88][S15] in Maine if there is a voter in your community that wants to appeal the decision of the[1194.16:1194.16][S15] registrar of voters. There's been some sort of Appeals Board in place for many, many[1200.23:1200.23][S15] years. Currently, the board consists of three members and two alternates. One of the members[1207.33:1207.33][S15] is appointed by the town clerk, which we did three years ago, and that's a four-year[1211.26:1211.26][S15] appointment. David Backer serves as the chair of the Registration Appeals Board. Very[1217.83:1217.83][S15] ably I made add, so in the event we ever did have an appeal to the board, David would[1223.83:1223.83][S15] chair that until next year, until 2014. Currently before you tonight are the alternates and[1232.00:1232.00][S15] members nominated by the Town Democratic Committee and Republican Town Committee, and[1236.44:1236.44][S15] these are three-year appointments. I apologize for the error in the packet that you have.[1241.83:1241.83][S15] These terms will be effective immediately. For a term to expire, May 13th, 2016, Democratic[1248.23:1248.23][S15] Town Committee has nominated Nolan Reichel.[1251.41:1251.41][S01] Reichel.[1252.41:1252.41][S15] One Rock Press Drive, and alternate Karen Hessel of 45 Wildwood Drive. The Republican[1258.66:1258.66][S15] Town Committee has nominated Martin Sheehan in Star Road, and alternate Janet Staples[1264.12:1264.12][S15] of 27 Trendy Road.[1266.00:1266.00][S01] So do I hear a motion? Jamie?[1273.83:1273.83][S13] Move that we approve the nominations stated in item 82-2013.[1280.33:1280.33][S01] Okay. And, and with the amendment that these terms expire May 13th, 2016. Do[1289.66:1289.66][S01] I have a second?[1290.66:1290.66][S12] Second.[1291.66:1291.66][S01] David, thank you. Do you have any discussion? No. Hearing no discussion, all those in[1296.16:1296.16][S01] favor? Oh, Jamie, you wanted to say something.[1298.23:1298.23][S13] I was just going to say kind things about both Nolan and Karen that I know well from[1302.91:1302.91][S13] the Democratic Town Committee, and they're very able additions to the board.[1308.00:1308.00][S01] Okay.[1309.00:1309.00][S12] Could I just ask?[1310.00:1310.00][S01] Yes, go ahead.[1311.00:1311.00][S12] Just, I'm curious if, because there's same-day voter registration, correct?[1314.66:1314.66][S15] Yes.[1315.66:1315.66][S12] So if somebody were denied the right to register to vote on the day of an election,[1321.83:1321.83][S12] would that board be able to handle an appeal so that that person could vote that very[1327.83:1327.83][S12] day?[1328.83:1328.83][S01] Wouldn't they vote and then?[1329.83:1329.83][S15] There would probably be a challenge ballot at that.[1331.00:1331.00][S01] Yeah, that's.[1332.00:1332.00][S12] So what does that mean?[1333.00:1333.00][S15] The ballot would be challenged, and then if there are any questions about the registration[1338.33:1338.33][S15] or what have you afterwards, then the voter appeals board could meet. If there was, the[1345.00:1345.00][S15] only time a challenge ballot comes into play is if there's a recount.[1350.41:1350.41][S12] So the person gets to cast their vote, and that would be dealt with after the fact?[1356.00:1356.00][S15] Yes, exactly. In my 27 years now, we've never had to go to the appeals board. I[1361.33:1361.33][S15] think that because of the laws in effect right now for voter registration, frankly,[1368.62:1368.62][S15] making it very easy in Maine to do so, including same-day registration, most folks have the[1375.48:1375.48][S15] time to get their proof of identity and residency to be able to register to vote. We really[1380.91:1380.91][S15] don't have a lot of problems with that. I think other states may have a little more[1384.50:1384.50][S15] problems than we do, but with the same-day voter registration, folks really are up on[1388.62:1388.62][S15] what they need. We really try to keep folks informed, particularly as we get close to[1393.94:1393.94][S15] an election cycle of what they'll need. We take advertisements in the newspapers here[1397.94:1397.94][S15] at Town Hall, the website, really try to get that information out so folks don't get[1402.88:1402.88][S15] denied and so forth, so.[1405.00:1405.00][S01] Good. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to[1412.12:1412.12][S01] item number 83, and that is a miniature golf request in a business BA zone. Do I have[1421.16:1421.16][S01] a motion?[1422.16:1422.16][S16] I have a motion. I think it's my first one in my term. I move that we move item[1434.62:1434.62][S16] 83-2013 miniature golf request in the BA zone to be reviewed by the Planning Board.[1440.66:1440.66][S01] Do I have a second? Second by Jamie. Thank you. Do you have any discussion, questions?[1447.41:1447.41][S01] Yes, David?[1448.41:1448.41][S12] I think that the Planning Board has a lot to do, and there's a lot on the Planning[1454.94:1454.94][S12] Board's plate. So before I refer something like this to the Planning Board, I just want[1458.91:1458.91][S12] to gauge whether there might be support among the council for such an amendment. And realistically,[1465.88:1465.88][S12] I just don't see this gaining much traction in Cape Elizabeth. And I understand the applicant[1473.00:1473.00][S12] is here, and I hope I'm not offending him, but I just, I don't, I just don't see it.[1481.12:1481.12][S12] This could potentially be in an area of town that is near resident residences. The town[1488.83:1488.83][S12] has been fairly resistant to certain types of commercial activity, and I just wouldn't[1498.12:1498.12][S12] want to send something to the Planning Board that I think would take up a lot of time[1502.23:1502.23][S12] and have rather dim prospects for success. But if, if there's enough people in the council[1508.00:1508.00][S12] that realistically think this change could come about, then I'm all, you know, I'd be[1512.66:1512.66][S12] all for sending it along. I just, I don't see it.[1515.23:1515.23][S01] Any other thoughts? Jamie?[1518.62:1518.62][S13] I mean, I'm, I'm open to hearing what Carl has to say about what his vision is[1523.98:1523.98][S13] for the miniature golf course and where exactly he would conceive of it being. I'm, I'm open[1532.00:1532.00][S13] to hearing it and seeing whether it should go onto the Planning Board.[1535.00:1535.00][S01] Anyone else? Well, I mean, I, I agree with David. You know, I just, I have this,[1546.12:1546.12][S01] this feeling that we send these things to the Planning Board while we think we're doing,[1550.50:1550.50][S01] you know, either the citizen request or ourselves justice by putting it through a public process.[1557.16:1557.16][S01] I just wonder about the wisdom of sending something like this that, that at least on[1561.88:1561.88][S01] the surface, from my perspective, is dead on arrival. I mean, it just, it, you know,[1567.62:1567.62][S01] I mean, today, I mean, this thing wasn't alive for what, you know, tonight's meeting,[1572.73:1572.73][S01] and we got, you know, we got one letter from a neighbor, and when everybody finds out[1577.48:1577.48][S01] it's happening, we're going to have exactly the same thing happen. So I just wonder about,[1582.66:1582.66][S01] you know, taking up valuable Planning Board time. And again, I'm all for public process,[1588.73:1588.73][S01] but I just, you know, I just cannot imagine a miniature golf course on Ocean House Road[1595.04:1595.04][S01] in Cape Elizabeth. I just, it just is far and beyond anything I could imagine. Caitlin?[1600.41:1600.41][S16] Well, I also agree with Jamie that we should listen to what Carl has to say, but[1606.00:1606.00][S16] at the same time, and all the years that I've been on the council, all of three now,[1611.23:1611.23][S16] every year our goal has been to be more business-friendly, try and find a way to bring more business[1616.23:1616.23][S16] into Cape Elizabeth, and Carl's doing just that over there at his new Cape Co-op. And[1622.88:1622.88][S16] so the Planning Board is exactly where an idea like this goes and gets vetted out, and[1628.83:1628.83][S16] they are going to, Carl's going to have to jump through all of the hoops that the Planning[1632.88:1632.88][S16] Board's going to put him through. What's it going to look like? What are the details[1635.38:1635.38][S16] going to be? How's it going to be laid out? What's the grass color going to be? I'm sure[1638.98:1638.98][S16] that's all going to be vetted through the Planning Board. That's why we have the Planning[1643.00:1643.00][S16] Board, for them to decide and find out the details and then send it back to us.[1648.66:1648.66][S01] Anyone else?[1650.23:1650.23][S12] If I could, I mean, I certainly would welcome the comments from the applicant to[1656.28:1656.28][S12] see what he has in mind. I think we have to balance what Caitlin just said with the[1661.62:1661.62][S12] butters who might be affected by this. This sort of thing can create a lot of stress[1666.38:1666.38][S12] among people who might live near such a business, and so even though we're just saying, hey,[1671.12:1671.12][S12] let the Planning Board deal with it and come up with a potential way to incorporate this[1675.54:1675.54][S12] use into the ordinance, it, if the council in the beginning really can't quite see it,[1682.41:1682.41][S12] I don't know why we would put people through that stress and put the Planning Board through[1687.00:1687.00][S12] the work when we've, we've sent a lot of items to the Planning Board already. But again,[1693.12:1693.12][S12] I'd be happy to hear from the applicant.[1694.12:1694.12][S01] Anyone else? Frank?[1695.33:1695.33][S10] I have a basic question. Is this a permitted use in this area? And what, would it, would[1704.12:1704.12][S10] it require a variance? Do we even know that?[1708.33:1708.33][S13] Yeah, it's the same thought.[1709.33:1709.33][S01] It's, well, I mean, that.[1710.83:1710.83][S10] Is it a permitted use? If it is, then I guess not.[1713.41:1713.41][S01] Go ahead, Michael.[1714.41:1714.41][S13] I believe it's here because the code enforcement officer has informed the person[1719.16:1719.16][S13] who's been doing this that it's not a permitted use in the BA zone.[1722.04:1722.04][S01] Any other questions?[1725.33:1725.33][S10] No, I think we should.[1726.33:1726.33][S01] So Kathy or Jessica, before I ask Mr. DeFritto to come up and speak? No? Sir,[1735.83:1735.83][S01] if you'd like to address us, please.[1737.23:1737.23][S17] Thanks for your time, just like three minutes. Carl DeFritto, I live at 500 Ocean[1743.73:1743.73][S17] House Road. The concept of miniature golf all of a sudden becomes Myrtle Beach or Hampton[1751.00:1751.00][S17] Beach. What I'm proposing is, and Kettle Cove Ice Cream is right there, and that's[1755.73:1755.73][S17] very busy. I'm looking for an ocean-themed, nature-based miniature golf, nine holes, 50[1763.38:1763.38][S17] by 50. There'll be no lights, music, windmills, any cartoon animals. It'll just be all-natural,[1774.04:1774.04][S17] and it's going to be in a 50 by 50 area. The things that are permitted in this area[1780.04:1780.04][S17] in the BA zone that we could do is, one is a gas station. We could also do boat repair,[1787.33:1787.33][S17] which includes sanding of fiberglass and wood, or we could put in a windmill. And my[1794.04:1794.04][S17] feeling is every day's not a beach day, and we've built the Cape[1799.88:1799.88][S17] -
windmill. And my feeling is every day's not a beach day. And we've built the Cape Co-op, and people seem to be very happy with it. It's something for, it's all people from Cape Elizabeth, and it would be a Cape Elizabeth, just another, another thing for people to do. Groups could do it. The, the town council could have their day at the, at the Cape Putt-Putt Club. It's not what you're, there'll be no plastic at all. It'll be all hedged and beautiful. And I'm proposing, this is a side shot, that 5% of all my gross profits would go to my favorite group, the Cape Historical Society. And it'd be in a 50/50, about the size of this room.
Carl, where would it be at the...
If you look at the, the new Cape Co-op with our seven businesses there, it's in the yard right there. And there's ample parking. There'll be bushes, and, and it's gonna be built by, if, you know, the town allows me, by also a Cape resident who is a professional, it's more like a putting green. He does professional putting greens for, I wanna say the well-to-do. There's probably 10 or 12 of them in Cape Elizabeth. If you can afford it, you can have a beautiful putting green put in by his company.
Frank?
Will it require expansion of the parking area there?
No, we have, we, we, we made more parking, and then there's, it's just under two acres of land there, and we have, I haven't counted all the spaces possible, but there's, there's many spaces.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to clarify that Mr. Diedrich is saying what he would do. The proposal before the council is to refer this to the planning board. There are no standards yet of, of what a miniature golf course could be. That is something that would need to be developed. And if, if this was to happen, it would not only apply to Mr. Diedrich's property, it would be to anything in the BA zone as well.
Okay. Any questions, Caitlin?
So, in the BA zone, it's not a permitted use under all the uses that gets listed, but that merely because, as you guys have expressed today, you just didn't think a miniature golf course would happen in Cape Elizabeth? I mean, if somebody thought it was possible, it might have got put on the list, and that's...
There's only about 15 things in the BA zone, and so...
Same, that's what I'm asking, is just that we take a look at whether or not this could be a permitted use.
Any other questions? Yes, Jessica?
Well, when there is not a, when, when there is not a permitted use, or an entity or individual is denied for lack of permitted use by the code enforcement officer, is this, is this the appeal redress process coming for the council?
Well, I mean, couldn't it mark, like, yes, it is. No one is questioning the interpretation of the code enforcement officer. I think all the parties agree that if it's not a specifically listed use, it's not a permitted use. So that, that's not, not what's at question. What's at question is, you know, is the, is, that's before the council, it is the proper place to, to go in order to try to amend the ordinance. There's two ways to try to amend the ordinances. One is specifically to just come to the council, which is the route we usually go. There's also requirement that you could require, that someone, if they wanted to amend the ordinances, could do it by a petition procedure that's in the town charter.
David? So it's not an appeal. It's just a request now for us to forward this to the planning board for the, to explore the possibility of amending the ordinance.
Right. So are we ready to take a vote on this?
Yeah, just one more thing. Yeah, I think at this position, you know, before, before anything gets decided, and he hasn't even fully fleshed out his plans yet, I think it's appropriate to send it to the planning board, that you don't quash it in its infancy before you give it the light of day.
David? And I, I would generally agree with you, Jamie, and I, I sort of appreciate Caitlin's sentiment. I, I just don't see this as having a realistic shot of success in the town of Cape Elizabeth. Certainly what Carl has described sounds very inviting, but that would apply to the BA zones that are in not only where Mr. Diedrich is proposing, but also over by Tara and the cookie jar, that area. And I'm, am I thinking of missing any others?
The big, the big BA zone is, is, that's still out there, is the part from the Inn by the Sea to the entrance to Crescent Beach State Park. That whole field is zone BA.
Certainly on the next issue that comes up, I'm gonna be...
That's a BB zone, but, that's a, that's the BB zone.
But very similar.
Right.
But, you know, there are seven of us, so, but however the vote comes out, it comes out.
Okay. Caitlin?
Mr. Quayfer, but the planning board would set the standards, you're saying, correctly? If they chose to make this a permitted use, the standards...
They would recommend them.
Exactly. They would recommend standards such as, you know, you can only have a miniature golf course if it's done this way on a lot of two acres or more, or something. So, you know, it's not gonna get crammed into places that you might not want it to later. They, this is their job to come up with this.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of moving this miniature golf request to the planning board for its review? All those opposed? Four, three. It's defeated. Three, four. Right. So, thank you, sir. The next item is number 84, day camps. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that we refer the proposed amendments concerning day camps as referred to us by the planning board to the ordinance committee.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I don't know if I should also amend my motion to include that it be set for a public hearing, assuming the ordinance committee refers it back to the council. It's set, be set for a public hearing on the council on June 10 at 7:00 PM. And the reason for that is that if we are gonna make this change, that we try to do so before the summer months hit us, when these, this is typically when these day camps occur. So if I could amend my motion to include that.
And is it set, is a second in agreement? Jessica?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion about this?
The amendment for day camp includes the words "to no more than four hours a day." I was, I was wondering if anybody knows anything more about that limitation.
The, go ahead, David.
My understanding is that was a recommendation of the planning board to limit it to no more than four hours per day, or no more than six children per session. I'm not sure I necessarily agree with those limitations, but that's something that we would take up. I'd be certainly willing to take up at the ordinance committee level.
Just don't know if that contradicts with what certain day camps are doing right now.
I don't know. My, my understanding is they typically go in the morning hours, but that's something we can find out.
Any further questions, concerns? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Item number 87. This will be the renewal lease for building 326 at Fort Williams Park. I don't know that Michael wants to update us on this, or Greg?
I think we missed a few.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed that. Item 85. That's what happens when you have a touchscreen. It moved proposed amendments to subdivision ordinance. Do I have a motion? Yes, Kathy?
I move that we, that the ordinance committee, that the proposed amendments be set forth for public hearing on Monday, June 10, 2013 at 7:00 PM.
Seconded?
I'll second.
Jessica, any thoughts? This was one of your important issues, David. Did this get cleaned up?
I'd be happy to defer to the chair if she'd like to...
That's okay. You're called on.
The, what the planning board did was review the subdivision ordinance and essentially make it compliant or in conformity with a state statute on subdivisions in the state of Maine. So as we discussed with the town planner at our last meeting, there were really no substantive changes. This was just a way, more tweaking the language to make it conform to state law, and also to make the ordinance more user-friendly. If you spend any time with the ordinance, if you've seen the, the new draft, the table of contents is a lot more logical. It's just a lot easier to find things. So again, nothing really substantive. It was more just tweaking of the ordinance.
Kathy, any?
No, he's right. And the, the, they did a wonderful job at reviewing this. I mean, piece by piece, letter by letter. And it's more user-friendly for the average person who may look up the ordinance to see what it is and, you know, what they have to do to comply. So that seemed to be one of the, the crux of the whole change.
Good. Any other comments? Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. 86. The proposed amendments to related to the responsibilities of the Conservation Commission. As background, anyone, Michael, is there any comment you wanna make about this before we...
Uh, no, I think, I think the important thing is the ordinance committee voted three to nothing to recommend this to the council for consideration.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Kathy?
Okay. I move that we, let's see. I'm trying to see what I'm supposed to say here. Again, that this goes to a public hearing for June 10, that the amendments, that the responsibility of the Conservation Commission have been changed according to the recommendations by the Foss...
Do I have a second? David, second. All those in, any questions, any concerns here? Again, this goes along with the Foss recommendations, which again is, thank you for all of those individuals who worked on that committee, and to the ordinance committee. Any questions, concerns, discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. And now number 87, the renewal of the lease for building 326 at Fort Williams Park. Do I have a motion?
Move that we approve the lease at Fort Williams?
Seconded. Jamie, thank you. Any comments?
Just wanna thank Greg for working with Behavioral Health Resources, and thank the tenant.
Any questions for anyone? Hearing none. All those in favor of renewal of this lease? It is unanimous. Thank you. Item 88, the Shore Road sidewalk estimate. Do I have a motion? David?
Yes, in accordance with the town council's goals for 2013, I move that we allocate $107,000 from the, oh, gosh.
Unallocated.
Unallocated funds to construct the extension of the Shore Road pathway between the two entrances at Fort Williams, as well as that section along between Cottage Lane and Surf Road, so that we would have a link from one end of Cape Elizabeth on Shore Road essentially to the other.
Do I have a second? Second, Frank? Do we have any, any conversation, discussion? Any comments from you, Michael, relative to this? Frank?
I guess, is, is the bid in the range that you were anticipating?
We don't have a bid yet. This is an engineer's estimate.
Oh, okay.
And what's, what would the process be for sending this out?
As soon as the council approves this, we'll, it's, it's already been designed. We'll ask the consulting engineer to, to finish the bid specifications. We'll issue a request for proposals. We'll get bids, and the hope would be it be constructed this fall.
Is this estimate within the ballpark of what you think?
I, yeah, I, you know, until I saw the estimate, I really didn't know. But yeah, it was, I was thinking about $100,000.
So, Michael, just for the record, having lived on Wood Road and having tried to cross Shore Road at the bottom of Wood Road, you know, with that little rise that comes down...
At the top of the hill.
At the top of the hill. The sidewalk is from Wood Road on the other side of Shore Road down to where the post office was.
Yeah.
So you can cross in that section?
There's a, yeah, there's a crosswalk down right near the old post office.
Right.
But we, we would not want one up closer to Wood Road because as people come over that hill, they wouldn't see anyone. But back in around 1970, there was a very bad accident there.
So there is a sidewalk as part of this proposal that's gonna be built from Wood Road down?
There's nothing on the Wood Road side. There'll be a full sidewalk on the shore side of Shore Road.
Okay. So people coming out of Wood Road will still have to walk, they'll either cross or walk...
Down to the post office and pick up the crosswalk.
So there is no sidewalk prepared for that side?
Not current, well, there's been, none designed.
Okay.
This is all on the one side of Shore Road.
Okay. Yes, Kathy?
My only concern, and basically it goes off of your whole conversation you just had, is maybe I just thought I missed it, but I haven't seen any drawings, engineer ideas, maps, concepts of what this is gonna look like. And so I'm just a little hesitant to sign over $107,000 with having no idea what is really planned to be done with it.
Yeah. I, you know, we, we have plans. You know, the, the intent between the two Fort Williams entrances is to have it exactly similar to the rest of the Shore Road pathway. It, it's, it would be a five-foot paved path with a separation between it and the road. You know, it goes up around that curve. But then when it gets down to the area by Shore Road, by the, between Cottage and Surf Road, it'll match the existing sidewalks in that area. There, you know, it'll be right up, it'll be a raised sidewalk right, right along there approximately. It'd be the same with five, you know, it could be a little bit wider because I think those sidewalks there are a little bit wider. But it's to match the existing.
Any other questions? So all those, all the background material is available for someone like Caitlin to look at?
Yeah, we'd have to share the plans. Then maybe we'll, you know, I'll see if I can get a electronic copy. We'll post them on the website for anyone to look at.
Okay.
It really wouldn't matter at that point because I've already had to vote to spend the money or not. So whether or not...
Yeah, I was just, I was just trying to turn...
Oh, I understand. I'm just saying, you know.
If you move the table, it...
I don't hold it all up with everybody else's...
I mean, I certainly appreciate where Caitlin's coming from, but I, I guess, based on all of our conversations, I was under the impression that it would be very comparable to the Shore Road pathway as built between the two entrances. And I, I've, having walked that a number of times and heard from a number of citizens, I, I do think it's important to have that link. It just doesn't make any sense to, to not have that link when so many people are running, walking, and biking, younger kids especially on that pathway. It doesn't make sense to me to not, to not have that link. So I'm, I'm comfortable voting for this tonight. I, just because I don't think it's anything that's very different from what we've already seen, and the rest of it is just in keeping with the existing sidewalks.
Jessica?
Yeah, I agree with Dave. Plus, that, that curve between the two entrances is really dangerous. And so, you know, and I, I certainly have the impression that in the past, we've talked about this, when we've talked about the Shore Road path and all that. So I'm, I'm comfortable.
I just want to make clear, I'm not objecting to extending the pathway and making it safer. I'm just objecting to the fact that we're basically being asked to allocate $107,000 and have gotten, I mean, when we did the Shore Road pathway, there was maps and designs, and it seemed like endless amounts of, of information. And here, I was just shocked that, you know, you're being asked to already allocate the money, no bids have gone out, nothing's concrete, and we're just sending it without having seen one map. I'm just expressing that concern. That's all.
You know, if, if you'd like, you can approve this. We'll go out to bid, and you can ask that the bids come back to you, and you can look at the plans. That, that's, that the council wishes to do.
Does anyone else feel the same way Caitlin does about this?
I guess, conceptually, I see where Caitlin's coming from. But on the flip side of it, I think the way the path was constructed and designed and constructed was, came out much better than I thought it would come out, and could have imagined it would come out, I'd say. And as long as it's consistent with that, I would have no problem with it. And I assume it will be consistent.
And is there, is there any feeling that we should amend this, this motion to include what Michael just suggested, that the bids come back here? I, I'm just asking for the will of the group.
I'm just not sure I understand what he means. So if we, if we pass this motion, the bids come back, do we have to reapprove the expenditure of the funds when the bids come back?
We do whatever the council wishes to do. But, you know, it's, I'm just, I'm just, my, my job is to give you alternatives to consider.
I mean, I, I don't mind doing that. I, I don't see the need, but I'm, if there's enough folks who want to do it, I'm happy to amend my motion.
Caitlin, I mean, would, would that give you some, I mean, you have a right to... to ask the question and I think it's a legitimate one, but is that a way for us to?
It just, to me, it just seemed, I mean, I'm fine either way we proceed. I'm just expressing, it just seems strange that we did it one way for like the Charles Road sewer issue. We just approved that because the bid came back and we approved the expenditure of the money. That was just last meeting, the meeting before. And they were just doing it differently and I just felt that, you know, the consistency wasn't there and I just wanted to express that. So either way, the Shore Road pathway is going to be extended and completed. I'm just saying, for future knowledge, we're a little inconsistent here.
I, I, I think, you know, Caitlin, I appreciate her point. For the most part, the consistency is, is that we don't share all of the plans and the details on, on all the different projects, you know. They're always available to anyone who wants to see them, but usually, you know, we, we do rely on the consulting engineers, Bob Mallie, Maureen, if it's in planning. Uh, you know, I think that the Shore Road pathway is definitely an exception because it was so controversial and it was so, it was so, it, it affected so many individual properties. In this case, we own the bulk of the property that it abuts, meaning Fort Williams Park. The town owns it. And, uh, you know, the, the other section down below there, you know, we, we will, as we always do, same with Shore Road pathway, we'll work very closely with the residents for the one or two properties that are on there.
So is, is there, other than pointing out the inconsistencies, is no, no willingness to modify the? No, okay. So I guess if there are no other points of view or no further discussion?
I guess, I, in the same vein that Caitlin's concerned, I, I want to be clear what we're voting on. Are we voting to approve an allocation up, up to a hundred and seven thousand?
The, the motion is up to a hundred and seven thousand dollars and we would take that as, as a, as a direction to go get the project done.
And not to exceed?
Not to exceed a hundred and seven thousand. And, and let, let me say this. Sometimes if, you know, if, if, we're not going to have another Shore Road path that's going to go way over, uh, that went over sixty-five thousand. Uh, in, in this instance, you know, it's much, it's much more defined. You know, if it ends up costing you a couple thousand dollars more, we would take it out of the sidewalk account or the roadway drainage account. But, you know, if, but, you know, my understanding is keep it under a hundred and seven. You know, if it gets above a hundred and twelve, you're going to see it again.
Okay. Jessica?
I move we approve item eighty-eight, uh, the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're all set with that. Except that there was some wording not to exceed that Jamie presented. So is that acceptable to the original?
I think I made the original motion. If I didn't say it, that's certainly my intent, so I would accept that amendment.
You would accept that and seconded?
I'll second.
Okay. Frank is, is seconded that motion, right?
Yes, I do.
Just to clarify, is this not to exceed a hundred and seven thousand from the unallocated general fund balance?
That's what I believe.
Which, which is not to say that if we cost another five thousand, we couldn't take it out of the existing sidewalk fund or the, the roadway drainage account. Is that, am I understanding clear?
The way I understand it, it's specific to the unallocated general fund.
That, that's the way the motion is. I'm aligned with that.
And that, that needs to be capped. It's very important that that be capped.
Okay. So are we all set?
Yeah.
Great. Um, before we close the discussion, if you read the agenda prior to a meeting and you find that there's an issue like this, there, these things can be taken and dealt with prior to a meeting. So in this situation, I would just implore all of you to read those agendas ahead of time and if there's a particular issue, reach out for me or reach out for Michael because, you know, we certainly, you know, maybe we could have taken this off the agenda or gone to a workshop or something with it that could have brought some of the issues forward that you, you present and rightly so. So all those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. And item number eighty-nine, they proposed ordinance committee review of vendor sales at Fort Williams Park. Do I have a motion? Yes, Kathy?
Um, yeah, I move that the ordinance committee be charged with reviewing ordinance issues relating to supervision of vendor locations at Fort Williams Park, including participation from representatives of the Fort Williams Advisory Commission.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Have any discussion?
I'm just wondering what the genesis of this is.
Yeah. Uh, within Fort Williams, we have vendors that are selling food and other communities have had issues with vendors selling other things on the streets and at other places. And there's, there's reason to believe that this is, is an issue that could crop up at Fort Williams Park and would like to get some legal advice reviewed by the ordinance committee to see if we ought to have some standards as to where those types of things may be allowed, uh, or not allowed in the future.
So, so does that mean, for example, or is the, is it contemplated that a food truck might show up and park in the parking lot at Fort Williams and how we would deal with that?
It's, it's food trucks and it's, it's street artists.
Street artists?
People that sell works of art.
Okay.
So this is, this is for the ordinance committee to, to think about restrictions that should be imposed. It's not the ordinance committee maintaining an ongoing oversight.
Right. That's right. The ordinance committee would work with Tom Leahy and report back to the council.
Okay.
Just, just to be clear, it wouldn't be just limited to food trucks or street artists. I suppose it also include people selling Chinese toys or anything, any vendors.
Vendor sales and vendor locations.
Yeah. Could Zach clarify that for you, Dave?
Yes.
Any further comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous? We come to the last item on our agenda and that's the second opportunity for citizens to discuss items with the town council that are not on today's agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to us? Just, if you would.
Before Dr. Krem comes up, I did want to, oh, he can come up, but while you're coming up, I just wanted to remind the council Greg Miles is here still. One of the reasons is, is after the, at the end of the meeting, I want to go over with the council showing you the plans for possibly this dius and just want to remind you that was in my written notes, but I didn't, I didn't mention it aloud earlier, so, thank you. Sorry, David.
Yes, sir. You'd introduce yourself and your address. Appreciate it.
Hi, good evening. My name's Eric Krem. I live at sixty-four Cross Hill Road. Thank you for this opportunity to meet you guys face to face. I recently submitted to many of you kind of an audio soundscape of issues related to the Spurwink Rod and Gun Club. I have a couple of questions. I think, you know, I'm just a father and a pediatrician. I'm not familiar with zoning variances and a lot of the details you guys discuss here. If I could distill my concern to one question, it would be, is the Spurwink Rod and Gun Club allowed to make as much noise as it wants in perpetuity without regulation? I think my neighborhood has serious concerns related to safety. I'm grateful for the people who brought those before you. I live in an area where I'm not in the line of fire, but the noise is incredibly burdensome. I was hoping to get your reaction to that question and also wonder if you might be able to help the discussions we've been trying to have with the gun club in a constructive way. Along, we as a neighborhood have waited a year for a range evaluation from expert friendly to the gun club, picked by the gun club, and a year later, it's not being shared with us. And I don't know how much stock I put in it, but I can't tell you because I can't even see it. So maybe you could ask them nicely to show us because we lost a year just waiting for it. But specifically, if I could only ask the council one question, are they just allowed to make as much noise as they want forever? Is there no upper limit to it? Because it's getting louder and louder by the year. And I know many of you are parents and if you have activities that are dangerous and annoying, most of you in your homes, I assume, place limits. And right now the gun club has none and it's just getting worse and worse and worse all of the time. But I'm curious to hear your reactions. Thank you for your time. Do I sit down now or?
But, well, one, didn't you just have a meeting with the gun club?
Well, a few of us went down there a couple of weeks ago.
Didn't you agree to share the cost?
We offered to chip in, you know, the president of the gun club made it very clear that they have big plans. They seem to be in keeping with NRA-type modernization, but asked several times in what, on their list of priorities, what acoustics means to them. He couldn't have been clearer that that's the least important thing on their list. They want very badly to be a more modern gun club. They have, as far as I can tell, no desire to be a quiet or neighborly gun club. There are engineering solutions to noise abatement issues. Even the NRA range source book, the kind of quote unquote bible of range development is pretty clear on the point that, about neighborhood relations and the use of sound barriers within a quarter mile. That meeting was a source of great frustration, but I was among a group of three or four or five neighbors that did go down to the gun club the other day to, where they pointed out what they do and clearly do not plan to do. This is a organization that couldn't be clearer that noise reduction is not any kind of priority at all. Obviously, safety comes first, but the, to my mind, the noise and safety issues run in parallel because the, the amount of firepower on display is, you know, I think shocking. It's not your grandfather's gun club anymore. It sounds like a, like a marine training camp. It's, you know, the routine use of semi-automatic, semi-automatic weaponry is, you know, as a father, it's hard to listen to. This is not the soundscape I planned for my children to grow up below. It's, it's, you know, it's, I think it's, I think it's shameful.
So was there or was there not an agreement to share the cost?
Well, I think, yeah, we.
Sound, sound engineer or someone?
I anticipate writing a check to these people to chip in for a sound engineer.
Okay.
But I can't, you know, they made it, they made it very clear that sound reduction is not a priority. I think he just did that to.
Yeah.
Throw us a bone. But they're not going to, they're not going to do anything, as, as you know, my personal feeling, you know, as you know, they recently required, you know, universal NRA membership. And my personal and political sense of the NRA is you don't affiliate with the NRA because you plan on volunteering to restrict something related to gun use and acoustics and their master plan is last on the list. They couldn't have been more clear about that, to my mind.
So, um, yes, David?
Well, I, I was hoping we could address this gentleman's question about.
Yeah, I know. I just want to, I want to get, I wanted to get that point out about the sound engineer because that was a discussion and an agreement. But Michael addressed the other piece of this that is important.
Yeah, the, I think everyone's aware, there's a provision in, I'm not sure which title it is because I don't deal with the gun rules all the time, but it's Section three oh one one Regulation of Sport Shooting Ranges. A municipal noise, this is state law, municipal noise control ordinance may not require or be applied to require a sport shooting range to limit or eliminate shooting activities that have occurred on a regular basis at the range prior to the enactment date of this ordinance. Nothing in this, in the next section three, nothing in this section limits the ability of a municipality to regulate noise produced by expansion of activity at a sport shooting range. The challenge is the state preempts us from limiting what's going on, on a regular basis. The issue is, is a definition of what is an expansion of activity and, and in trying to, to define what that expansion is and seeing if there was an attempt, we, a community could regulate noise produced by expansion of activity at a sport shooting range.
David? And that was my understanding. And, you know, initially, when I heard about noise complaints from the Cross Hill neighborhood, I thought, well, the Rod and Gun Club is already there. They move in next door to a Rod and Gun Club, what do they expect? But what I'm hearing now, and certainly within the last year or so, is that the, the type of noise, and who knows whether it's a, a new use at the club or not, but it appears to be more severe from, based on what we're hearing from the residents. So I do think that we have to figure out as a council whether we ought to explore that issue because if it's an expansion, it sounds to me like the town can do something. And I'm not saying we want to put the Rod and Gun Club out of business, but if it's, if it's a significant expansion, I think we need to take a look at that. And, and we still have the safety issue and I'm a little baffled by, I thought there was going to be a move by the Rod and Gun Club to make the shooting range safer. And I forgot the expression for the, for the term.
They've talked about a new, a no blue sky range.
Something, yes.
Maybe you're thinking of that.
And, and it, I think it would be helpful for us to get an update on that issue as well. I, I'm a little leery about whether all of this is a town council issue or not, but it certainly seems like the expanded noise issue could be.
Yes. Michael, did you want to say something?
Just, just on, on the, the point you just made, David, we, we have received reports, as have the neighbors, from the Spurwink Rod and Gun Club on what they are doing to address some of the safety issues, specifically in relating to berms, relating to fences, relating to increasing, uh, you know, some of this, in order to do the blue sky thing. Uh, no blue sky thing. Uh, you know, it, you know, if you look at the citizens' complaints, you know, there's the one, the, to me, there's two, there's two complaints. There's a lot of them, but boils down to two. One is assurance of safety and the other is just plain noise. And, you know, it's noisy. And the safety issues, the Rod and Gun Club in the last three years, I think, has made more progress than they probably did in the previous fifty in terms of beginning to address some of those issues. And, you know, and they are, they're continuing to address them, they're continuing to invest, but, you know, they indicate they only can produce so much money to, to, you know, to do it and they're implementing it over several years. But we, that can, we can get a report to you if you'd like. Uh, you know, this wasn't on the agenda tonight, so, but we do have, we do have information from the Rod and Gun Club, a written report we received several months ago with some of the safety things they were doing and doing and or contemplating.
Yes, David.
And I know the neighbors received that as well.
Again, I was not a huge fan of the council devoting a lot of time to this issue before. I'm not sure where I stand right now, but I think it may be worth some time at an upcoming workshop where we could just get an update. And then bat around the idea of whether the council ought to be exploring the noise issue and/or safety issue.
Can I, can I add to my question? Just to expand on the, the safety issue, I, because I simply just don't understand the, why Cape Elizabeth's, why regulations related to just firearm use are just as, why the attitude is as laissez faire as it is. Because although the state law does talk about preemption, there's nothing in that section that says an order, ordinance, rule, or regulation of any political subdivision, it's not prohibited as far as regulation of discharge of firearms, firearms is concerned. So in terms of regulating the discharge of firearms, I think you guys have broad powers. And as a neighbor, part of my concern is that if Falmouth and Scarborough and Cumberland have rules, that Cape Elizabeth is quickly going to become Southern Maine's anything goes shooting range if we're not keeping up with modern safety standards and just the degree of semi-automatic weaponry on display there. So I just don't understand why the rule is so short.
If I might answer that one, you know, I've heard that concern expressed a number of times. Basically, it's those other communities already had regulations in place before the state preemption occurred. The state preempt, preemption, when that was put in place, the only, you know, regulations Cape Elizabeth had were, were, you know, what shotgun only, you couldn't fire a rifle in Cape Elizabeth. And, you know, the state preemption, preemption reads, "The state intends to occupy and preempt the entire field of legislation concerning the regulation of firearms, components, ammunition, and supplies, except as provided in Section three, subsection three, any existing or future order, ordinance, rule, or regulation in this field of any political subdivision of state is void." And then it goes on to regulation restricted, except as provided in subsection three, "No political subdivision of the state, including towns, et cetera, may adopt any order, ordinance, rule, or regulation concerning the sale, purchase, purchase delay, transfer, ownership, use," which is the important word, "possession, bearing, transportation, licensing, permitting, registration, taxation, or other matters relating to firearms, components, ammunition, or supplies. The exception is, this does not prohibit an order, ordinance, rule, or regulation of a political subdivision which, with the exception of appropriate civil penalty provisions, conforms exactly with any applicable provision of state law or which regulates the discharge of firearms." of firearms within a jurisdiction." So it's a pretty strong preemption.
But accepting the regulation of discharge by any political subdivision, I take that to mean you guys have fairly broad power and ones which the state or county aren't going to exercise.
You know, to this state with, you know, we have not received any opinion that I'm aware of from a legal person. I know one of the councilors, excuse me, Jamie, formerly represented, you know, the association, but I have not seen, and, you know, I could be reminded of it, a specific legal argument that says where the town has certain rights that.
And that's part of what I'm here to ask. Again, I'm just a pediatrician. I'm not familiar with these rules, but my reading is that, you know, because you drive into other towns, you see signs, you know, hunting by shotgun only, or firearms discharge is prohibited.
Well, I, I'd like, if it's okay, I'd like to wrap this up. We've heard what you've had to say. What I've heard from Councilor Sherman is that we should take this to a workshop and get an update from the manager, and we ought to look at that, that the issue about possibility that the noise is different, therefore, there is something that could possibly be done. But that's why I want to take it to the next step. I don't think we want to be sitting here tonight for the next hour and a half debating some narrow definition when we're not lawyers. And I think that, is that, well, no, I mean, I think, I don't really want David or Jamie giving it legal advice or Caitlin. I really don't.
Just because I spend most of my days on the phone.
No, but I really don't think that's prudent at this point. I think taking it to a workshop is the best approach.
I do have one question.
And I also, I also, we also have an administrative issue we need to deal with as to whether you should be weighing in on this conversation at all, having, having represented the Cross Hill group in the first place. And I don't want to have that discussion tonight, but I really, I really believe we need to go to a workshop to have a good, good, solid discussion around this with some, some data from either a lawyer or from our town manager or from the gun club, as well as from the association. So I just, you know, and I don't want to cut anything off here, but I do want you to understand that if we were going to be taking this up as a vote or in any way, shape, or form, Jamie, we'd have to be talking about whether, whether you should be, you know, sitting in on the discussion based on your representation previously. And that's just, that's just me speaking from, from my perspective. So, so I'd like to wrap it up since it's not really a vote here, and it's just simply receiving citizen input, that we will take this to a, to a workshop. And so, and again, we've got workshops scheduled over the next month.
Yeah, one scheduled in June.
In June. Okay. And we thank you very much.
I can give you that.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn. So move? Seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I guess, Greg, we have some conversation with you.